Approve the amendment.
So moved, Benninga.
Second.
A motion and a second. Now I would, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now I would look for a motion to approve the amended minutes from March 22nd.
It's all moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Good. That's all done. Now we'll go on to public comment. If there's anyone here who wants to speak on something that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Tom Greckle. I'm the Sioux Falls City Clerk, and I just wanted to come before you this morning and express my gratitude, our gratitude, for our ongoing relationship as it relates to our city elections. As you've seen, we've been conducting absentee voting in here, and we continue to have a very fruitful, very constructive relationship with the county auditor's office. We do really appreciate what the county does for us, for all Sioux Falls voters. We'll be in here again this Saturday, April 9th, from 8:00 to 12:00 a.m. But I also want to just highlight Auditor Kites, great, great working with him and his team. Has some veterans on his team, some new folks. They're all committed to what they're doing and really looking forward to a great election. So, again, I appreciate the work the commission's done, the relationship that we have, and look forward to a great election. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment? Not seeing anyone move. Commissioner Barth also brought it to my attention that, you know, under consent agenda, we have a lot of, we recognize our significant employee anniversaries, and I think there were like nine or 10, anywhere from five to 20 years. And just knowing that we appreciate people who stick with us, this is a good place to work, and also that we have a significant amount of anniversaries, excuse me, volunteers that work for the county, and we really couldn't do it without our county. So just to publicly recognize them, even though it's on our consent agenda. Okay, with that, I will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to issue proclamation declaring April 10 through 16, 2022, as a national public safety telecommunications, I can't talk today, telecommunications week in Minnehaha County. Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott McMahon, Director, Metro Communications, 1629 West Bennett Drive in Brandon, South Dakota. Come before you this morning to introduce you to National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 10th through the 16th. Each year, we celebrate the second week in April to recognize the contributions that 911 operators make in public safety, and it's, you know, it's really a time to just recognize how they truly make a difference in public safety in each and every emergency that the public has. So with that, I would ask for your support through a proclamation to recognize, recognize their efforts. So, appreciate that.
Scott, you get to read it.
Okay. This year, I came prepared. I have it with me. And essentially, the proclamation says, whereas emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Metro Communications. Whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Metro Communications Agency have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Minnehaha County Commission declares the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Minnehaha County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Look for a motion.
Make the motion. I do have a comment, I guess, or question.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Barth?
Are you doing anything down there to celebrate?
We will. We'll have, all week, we'll have celebrations of, you know, just food and activities. We welcome all of our city and county leaders, our partner agencies, to stop in and, and visit with our communications officers and, and express your appreciation for the work they do.
Another question. Do you keep track of how many times a particular commissioner calls in?
Yes, we do.
And Scott, I have a copy signed for you.
Okay, thank you.
You can come up, pick it up, because I think you need a copy before you leave. So, thank you. And also recognizing, I said something about volunteers, there's a lot of volunteer firefighters and other people too, in law enforcement too, that work for us, so.
Madam Chair, if there are people in the hallway, there's room in here. You just have to go in front here.
Can you see if there's anyone standing in the hallway that wants to be in here around the corner? Okay, we're good. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to issue a proclamation, oop, nope, that is right, regarding the volunteer work in Minnehaha County. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver.
Thought I was repeating myself.
No, today is proclamation day. You've mentioned a couple of times already this morning the work that our volunteers do, and this is my honor to be able to bring to you this annual item to recognize our volunteers throughout the county.
You want to read it first?
Do I get the honors too?
Yep, you do.
Okay. All right. Whereas, National Volunteer Week is April 17th to the 23rd, 2022, and whereas, National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities, and whereas, volunteers make a significant contribution to Minnehaha County. In 2021, each month, an average of approximately 166 volunteers contributed to several areas throughout the county, giving literally thousands hours of service, enriching the lives of those that they have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Minnehaha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas, the Minnehaha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support county government and make our community place, our community a better place to live. Now, therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Minnehaha County Volunteer Week.
Thanks, Carrie. Any questions or comments for Carrie? A motion?
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Number 12 is consider, consideration of communications to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission concerning the proposed...
Madam Chair, I, just there, I see people coming, and I think, it's hard to walk in front of the podium and stuff.
Let's start again. Item number 12 is consideration of communications to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission concerning the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline deferred from March 22nd. Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler Clark, Commission Office. The Commission had deferred this item at the March 22nd meeting to allow staff and the public as well to attend the PUC public hearing, which was held on March 23rd. The draft letter that has been discussed at previous meetings has been updated to reflect what was discussed at the PUC public hearing, and at this point, we look for the Commission to provide direction as to what this letter will entail in sending it to the PUC.
Thanks, Tyler. So, obviously, most of these people here are to speak about the pipeline again. I would ask that we don't repeat any information that we have from the past two meetings, and that we just keep it to new information. And if you have a spokesperson, that's great. If you'd still please introduce yourselves at the podium when you speak, and then, as long as your name and addresses are on the, if your name and address is on our sheet, you won't have to repeat your address up here publicly. So is there anyone who would like to speak on the public utilities?
That'd be great. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Bonander. I've signed in, but I believe at 26268 486 Avenue in Valley Springs. I'd like to thank you for writing that letter to the PUC. That is really important to our group. I'd like to have our group stand so you see who we are. Please stand. Thank you, everybody. It's really important, so thank you very much. Can't express that enough. We're going to request two, have two requests for the Commission today, and that is, one, the federal guidelines are rather lax, and would like to have the county work on requiring more strict guidelines with planning and zoning. And so that way, we can ensure protection because how appropriate to have the Metro Communications here today on public safety, because I think that's really the big key here, is keeping the citizens of Minnehaha County safe. The second thing we're going to ask the Commission to do is apply for party status. That way, it gives you a seat at the table. It doesn't cost the county anything, and at the same point in time, if you decide you want to walk out and not attend the meetings, you can do that as well. But it just, after the 8th, you don't, you don't have that opportunity to, to be involved with the PUC. And so, as the most populated county in the state, and the elected leaders, as responsible as you are, I'm sure you'll take that into consideration. So, with that, you know, we want to just pursue our life, liberty, and happiness according to the Declaration of Independence. We want to thank you for your support, and with that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bonander at this point? Otherwise, we'll continue to move on. Maybe we should hear all comment, you want to do it now, or do you want to hear all comments?
I guess, you said two stipulations. The first is more...
Well, yeah. Well, let me try and make myself more clear. Thank you. What, what I'm asking for is to go back to planning and zoning and look at the ordinances that we have in place. Right now, as I understand it from Scott Anderson, we will follow the federal guidelines, which states that the pipeline needs to be buried a minimum of three feet deep and 50 feet away from a residence, a church, any kind of building. We think that needs to be enhanced. I was just talking to some people from Sky Tower this week, and their, their requirements from the county of Minnehaha is that it'd be, the tower would be three, three miles away from a current tower, and 1,300 feet from a residence, and that's a communication tower. So I think with a hazardous, hazardous material pipeline, that's OSHA's definition, I think that we probably would like to have something more than 50 feet. That's my comment there. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the pipeline? Come on up.
Mr. Anderson, 48512-260 East Street, Valley Springs, South Dakota. I've got three brochures here that I found out, or pieces of information I found online, and one is an engineering on CO2 pipelines. And reading through it, this is, this brochure is all about designing, and I'm not going to go through and read all 25 pages of it, but I've highlighted a few things, and I'm only going to touch on a few of those. And in here, it says...
Sir, would you pull the microphone a little closer so they can hear you? Thank you.
Some things to keep in mind. Even the pipeline pressure drop is dependent, among other factors, on the length of the pipeline. The pressure drop along a pipeline would be greater for a longer pipelines than for shorter ones with similar characteristics. And one, one of the articles that I read was that when you have pressure fluctuations in CO2 pipelines, it can actually form a dry ice plug, which is why they rupture. And so, one of my questions is if a pipe, or when a pipeline ruptures, what's the chance of CO2 getting into drain tiling systems and popping up someplace we really don't expect it to pop up? And it also has in here, it is impossible to have a conceptual design of a CO2 pipeline without adequate knowledge of expected flow rates. The flow rate of CO2 fluid is therefore more, the most important parameter in the design of CO2 pipelines. Then going on to my next point, most models assume pure CO2 streams, but no CO2 stream is 100% pure, and therefore, they are not quite accurate. The effect of impurities on the properties of CO2 is profound, and modeling to present in practical situations is necessary. And my next point is, impurities affect the density, pressure, and temperature changes, critical pressures, and temperature, and viscosity, but most models ignore the effects of impurities. Pressure loss values calculated with the assumption of pure CO2 will therefore be inaccurate. No model considers pressure loss due to the acceleration of the fluid, which is present whenever there is a change of velocity in the fluid, and the accurate determination of density and viscosity of the CO2 fluid with impurities will improve the accuracy of the pipeline diameter and pressure drop models. What happens, one of my questions is, you know, we're getting, we're going to be collecting the CO2 from various industries here in the, in the state, and I want to know what's going to happen when, at, wherever they're getting the CO2, when they have a breakdown. That's going to change the impurities that are going into the CO2. And granted, you know, they're, they're trying to make a consistent product, but it, this article states how critical that is in proper function of the pipeline. I used to work for the city of Sioux Falls in, in wastewater treatment, and everything's good when everything's going smooth, but when an, when an industry has a rupture in their refrigerant or something like that, and you get a slug of ammonia coming through, or something like that, that's kind of when things get exciting. Another brochure I wanted to show you, this is by Denby, and this is pertaining to a pipeline, I believe it was in Montana, but some highlights in there that someone is telling us that, that, you know, they've got every, that they've got adequate measures in line and kind of downplay everything, but this pipeline, right on the front cover, says, "Pipeline safety is everybody's responsibility." I'm not going to read everything in here, but it also says in here, "Are your students prepared, are your students prepared to recognize and respond in the event of a pipeline incident? Is pipeline emergency response included in the emergency response or evacuation plan for your school?" So, I guess I will...
If you wanted to give those to, you'd have to give them to a staff member, and then they could copy them and give them out to us either in our Dropbox or something. So Carol's a staff member, you can give it to her, and she can see that it's distributed later. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? I think, yeah, right.
My name is Linda Dansman Nichols, and I'm going to cry because I'm so passionate about this. This, this is just my story. This isn't, I don't have research. I've done research, but this is my story. My dad purchased about 80 acres of land in Section 29 of Hartford Township in 1976. This added to his existing farm in Section 29. Now he's, now he was the owner of the complete southwest section of 29. This new purchase had a beautiful L-shaped grove of trees. My mom's dream was to someday build the retirement house there. Unfortunately, my mom passed away in 1992.
Carol, you want to give her a glass of water, too? That might help.
Your time.
Yep.
I was able to carry out my mom's dream in 1996. Built my house on 1.2 acres of the land in, on my dad's, on my dad's land. My home and my mom's dream was completed in October of 1996. Fast forward to 2015, Dakota Access Pipeline proposed a 30-inch oil pipeline within 300 feet of my home. That was an unexpected fight. Although the, although the land the pipeline was going through was my dad's, it still had an effect on my home. My dad obtained a lawyer, and we began to, to fight, only to have Dakota Access file eminent domain on us. Then, partway through the easement process, Dakota Access decided to tell us that there would be a shut-off valve placed on our easement. There will be a chain, chain leak fenced area with barbed wire around the top. We were able to negotiate the shut-off valve to move back away from the road, so it was not our direct view out of our front window. But if you sat on our front deck or back deck and peered to the east, our beautiful view was gone. Now we have a shut-off valve. Now we have another fight on our hands. In 2021, Summit Carbon Solutions sent a letter stating that they would like to construct a carbon pipeline next to the Dakota Access Pipeline. I was neutral on the concept at first, but the more and more I research and learn about this process, the more I'm opposed to it. Summit Carbon Solutions was not able to reach my dad, so they started calling me and stopping by my house. My dad and I attended a meeting on March 15th in Hartford that Carbon Summit Solutions hosted. At that meeting, Ms. Angel Thomas, a land representative for Summit Carbon Solutions, showed us the proposed pipeline route through my dad's land. She used her measuring tool on the map and said that the proposed pipeline would be 143 feet from my house. This is a 20-inch pipeline with hazardous material, 143 feet from my home. The proposed pipeline would be between the Dakota Access and my house, and from Dakota Access to this one, it's 160 feet. That poses more questions to me as, when there is a rupture, what will that do to the shut-off valve and the Dakota Access pipeline? We're a family of five. We're all involved in the family operation. My oldest son, Luke, takes care of their, the hay ground. When my dad retires, Luke will take over the farming, the rest of the ground. Luke will be the third generation farming these 80 acres, and the fifth generation farming the other land. He would like to eventually build his home on this land as well. In closing, I would like to request that you Commissioners do three things to preserve my family heritage. Pass a moratorium regarding hazardous pipelines, pass ordinance and setbacks regarding minimum depth and, minimum depth requirements, and sign up for party status on pucdoc@hp22-001. I do have pictures if you would like to see, but they're in that packet, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Linda. Any questions for Linda? It's okay. I've been on your side too, and it's really passionate. I get it.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Good morning. Joy Hohn from Hartford. Thanks, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm sure you don't want to see me every week, and I don't want to really be here every week, but I'm concerned. I'm concerned as a mother, a wife, a daughter, a sister, a family, I mean, friends, for my friends, for my neighbors, and for the citizens of Minnehaha County. Yesterday morning, I received an urgent call from a very agitated landowner that lives a couple miles south of us. He was very upset that there was a survey crew on his land without any permission from him and any legal notification from Summit. From past experience, I am here to tell you that this is how these companies operate. They walk all over landowners. We need protection, and we need this protection from you, our elected Minnehaha County Commissioners. We need you to consider the safety and welfare of the citizens and landowners of Minnehaha County. You have seen what a rupture of an eight-inch pipeline would do. You are aware that a rupture or leak of carbon dioxide will seriously affect or kill people in a short amount of time. Do you know what a rupture of a 20-inch pipeline would do that is only four feet underground? Imagine how much more violent and explosive this would be. As a reminder, carbon dioxide is, is colorless and odorless, a silent killer. It is an asphyxiant and an intoxicant. Once again, under high concentrations, it can result in death in less than 15 minutes. We need you to take a strong position with this pipeline, because we all know that there will be more to come. PUC Commissioner Gary Hanson said that they need to know where the county stands. At the end of your letter to the PUC, Minnehaha County needs to take a stand and state that they oppose the pipeline and to ask for the PUC to deny the Summit Carbon Solutions permit. We are asking for the county to apply for party status by this Friday, April 8th. Party status is just reserving a seat at the table. Since there is so much unknown about this project and the regulations that they fall under, it is critical to keep legal standing in the case in order to ensure that the county will have a voice in the process if they so desire. You will not have the opportunity to express the county's concerns or opinion after party status deadline of this Friday, April 8th. Other counties are passing moratoriums and ordinances to protect their citizens and landowners, such as a 1,500-foot setback and a six-foot depth. We are asking that you place a moratorium in order to supply, or I'm sorry, in order to study and determine what the appropriate amount should be, taking into consideration the frost line, our real water lines, and a deeper depth to give additional time for detection if there was a leak. We would like to suggest greater requirements for Minnehaha County since this is the most populated and largest county in the state. Once again, we are asking for the county to protect us by, one, applying for start party status, two, stating that you are opposing this pipeline in your letter to the PUC, and three, placing a moratorium to study appropriate ordinances for our county and for the safety and welfare of our citizens. County Commissioners, the five of you have been elected by the people and have the power to do what is right. Look at the concerned landowners. You know, Linda's crying. The landowner here that had the survey crew come onto his land yesterday is here. We're all concerned about this pipeline. You have the responsibility to help, to us, to protect the citizens and the landowners of Minnehaha County, not to summit, not to put billions of dollars in their greedy pockets at the cost of our lives and our land. Remember this, profit for a few should not outweigh the rights of many. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? I would remind you again, you know, we've heard some of these are repeated. Please do not repeat what we've already heard from previous people. We've heard the three points as to what you're interested in, and to keep your message, a new message that we haven't heard in the last three sessions. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name's Chase Jensen. I live here in Minnehaha County, and am also a community organizer with Dakota Rural Action. I've been involved, called in by landowners late last year, trying to get resources, educate, learn more about these pipelines, what's going on, what is the process, and I echo all the things that have been said with those requests. I want to add a couple notes to them. With the ordnance, well, with other counties that have already taken action, McPherson County has passed a moratorium. Brookings County hasn't yet had the Navigator Line come through, which will also pass through Minnehaha County, that they've passed a moratorium on these hazardous liquid pipelines. Today, there's probably six or seven other counties meeting, their commissioners meeting, who are discussing intervening. And yesterday, Hand County also moved to intervene, joining Edmonds, and I'm guessing at least five others will be joining after today. So, you're in good company discussing this. Landowners all across the state are concerned. And I just want to point out with the, two things. One, related to the process of eminent domain, and how your voice is so important in that. And then, the second thing will be, I'll start with that one, is with the zoning requirements, setbacks, depth requirements. There has not been a CO2 pipeline in South Dakota, really in the region, yet. And there's a huge push nationally. The, I've seen maps of kind of the big plan, what would like to happen for the proponents of CCS, carbon capture sequestration, and they're... And they're talking over 55,000 miles of pipelines through the US connecting industrial sites to sequestration sites, increasing beyond what natural gas lines are in the nation. So there's a huge infrastructure pushout by proponents of this technology. And right now, the Midwest is ground zero and because of our state's process, South Dakota has become the first place where this, where you have these companies coming in and it's going to be the first kind of pairing between the landowners and state and then the company coming in with a project. And so there's a lot that will follow from this. I likely anticipate more carbon pipelines will try to come through South Dakota in the future, especially if these are successful and have a really easy time going forward. There is worst-case rupture modeling that the company should be doing and evidently is conducting, which they had promised to some landowners they were talking about would be released before the public input meetings that the PUC held. That wasn't released and of course, wouldn't be good for PR if they're discussing what the worst-case scenario would be. But we feel as the landowners, as the people who are taking their risk for their company, that that should be released and taken into account so that counties can do zoning ordinances because this is just an unknown factor. We don't, we haven't dealt with these before. We don't have regulations throughout the state for them. And so by applying for party status in the case, you would be able to be present and push the company to release those. And if that's paired with a moratorium so that a study can be conducted on zoning regulations, I think that is one of the key elements that would be beneficial for obtaining party status, is that you can be present, have a representative push them to release those so that that study, those rupture models, can be factored in to zoning requirements. And I think that that ought to be the correct order. We shouldn't let them come in and then have the zoning as the federal, you know, 50 feet from a house and then they release a study that says it could spread a mile. You know, I think we should have in place the measures to let our zoning ordinances be contingent upon what the rupture modeling shows it should be. As far as the party status, the other thing I'll add is, there's also concerns about, from that rupture modeling, of what training do our first responders need? Depending on the size of the plume that would come out from a rupture, you're going to need certain equipment, you're going to need certain training. We need to know what the issue, what our hospitals should be equipped with in the event of a worst-case scenario rupture. And those should all be requests that are made to the company if you're, that's the cost of doing business. If you're going to come in and these are the risks associated with your project, you are going to outfit our first responders, our hospitals, you're going to do all the training, and it needs to be regularly updated because we have.
We really have talked a lot about training. That was in one of our first meetings.
Okay, all right. I wasn't in the first one. I apologize. I'll, I'll stop there. But that, that is something in party status that you could press them on in the hearings. The last thing on eminent domain, as the commissioner said, if the counties don't say anything, they are assumed to be fully in support of the project. And currently, the eminent domain process is that the PUC says we don't have anything to do with that, we don't sign off a form, but the law states that a common carrier that receives a permit receives eminent domain. And so this is just a place where we have bad laws and we need to find out how we can be protected in the midst of having bad laws that don't protect citizens. Because if the PUC permits this, they, they don't have to argue and fight for being a public use, they just assume the right of eminent domain, which is why it's so critical in the midst of this all to realize that landowners can't say no to a project that's harming their safety. And so if that is a concern we're going to hold, then it's imperative that the counties speak up and say we oppose the project. So that's part of why the big push is on counties to speak up because landowners have a very limited voice and the law provides very little room for us to push back on the claim that something is public use. It's like it doesn't even matter. They just need the permit from the PUC and the PUC doesn't look into that issue during the process. So we ask that you oppose it and thank you for the action you've already taken on it. Thanks.
Thanks, Chase. So anybody else that has any new information? Okay, I'm going to take it back to the commission. I would remind you that this conversation is only on considering communication to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission concerning the proposed pipeline. That is the only thing we can talk about today because that is what our agenda is. So we can talk about what that letter is and party status, I think, would be a part of that letter. So I'll throw it back to the commission for comments on party status or the letter that we have proposed thus far. Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, I don't really like the letter we've written. I think it's a little too mild-mannered. You know, there's a lot of stuff involved in this and, you know, I've done some research also on it and CO2 is better than water for fracking. They're pumping this up there under the guise of being a green project when in fact it's a radical plan to pump cash out of the federal government and, and cash out of other businesses for the, the carbon credits. Continental Oil has donated, donated, or invested $250 million in, in this project. I don't think we should not, just do party status. I think we should pass an ordinance to say no to this, this pipeline, an ordinance to put a setback for any pipeline, a ban on pipelines. We need to have revenue or liability coverage for our people and, as I said, training and equipment. This, this project, in my view, is bad for the land, bad for the people, bad for our county. And, you know, there is a saying that under God, the people, people rule. That's apparently not the case. I've heard from other counties that they've been advised that whatever we do is just a speed bump for the roller, the steamroller that's coming and that there's no way any of us can stop this. But we need to do our best to protect our people, protect our land, and protect our way of life.
First of all, we don't permit part, pipelines. That's, that's the PUC. I think our letter is very well worded, constructed in that we do not want eminent domain used. We are concerned about setbacks. We are concerned about emergency response training and equipment. We're concerned that even if conditions are put on by the PUC, that they're not enforcing them. And the last one is the one that I asked for last week was, or two weeks ago, that our landlord, our landowners be held harmless from all liabilities and claims for damages. I think it's inappropriate, Commissioner Barth, to say that this is, this CO2 is going to be used for fracking in North Dakota and it's, we have no proof of that and in fact, it's been very publicly denied. You know, a moratorium by federal statute can only last for, I believe, two years. And in fact, most other counties have a one-year moratorium, so. And it's written that, when I read Moody County's moratorium, it's only when the Public Utilities Commission gives the county the ability to permit or to impose conditional uses on a pipeline. If the PUC doesn't give us that, we can't even do anything from the way I read the resolution. And a resolution doesn't have the binding effect of an ordinance, from what I understand I am concerned, I'm, you know, if it's a steamroller and setting our way, we got to be part of the voice that, you know, these are our concerns and I think we addressed them very well in our letter. Because I do share the concerns of the landowners and I'm not an expert on pipelines. Does burying a pipeline more than four feet actually cause problems? It, it may. I don't know. I'm going to leave that up to the experts. That's why I'm not in charge of permitting a pipeline. If I was, I'd have to do a whole lot more homework when it came to this. So we got to be careful that where our intention is to make things better, that we're actually not making it worse because we could become culpable for anything that happens and be partially responsible. And I don't want to get into that area of regulating pipelines. I do want the voice heard. I am fully supportive of that and I will stand behind the letter.
Additional comments? Commissioner.
Well, I would just say, I didn't hear anybody here today oppose anything that was in the letter. So I don't, it seems to me that it's, I, I think the letter clearly expresses concerns that were raised and, and puts Minnehaha County on record to the PUC, who ultimately has authority over this permitting process. So I, I'm fully supportive of sending the letter, which I think is the item that's on the agenda for today.
Well, I would agree with the comments. I do feel very strongly that the majority of the people are obviously against this and I understand their concerns. Frankly, the biggest issue that I continue to hear over and over is when you, and I'm not being critical, but if you take the emotion out of some of the facts, the real issue is the safety issues that frankly is not addressed anywhere, nor are people trained to be able to respond to that. That's pretty scary to me. So that particular issue by itself means that I'm very supportive of the letter.
Additional comments? You have to recognize again, we have to go by what is on our agenda and this is what our agenda is, is to approve this. And I, I will ask you again, is there anyone that's interested in making party status? Because if there is, there'd need to be a motion and a second.
I guess, if I may, Madam Chair, I, and I'm vague on what party status actually gives us. It doesn't say that we're for it or against it. It just allows us a seat at the table, so to speak. But to what end is where my question is? To what end, what benefit does having that seat at the table? Does that mean that as a body we can go, as individuals we can go? I'm, I'm really not certain on this process. What, what does party status mean for us?
Do you want to answer that? Or not?
I want to. Commissioner Kersky, the, the party status would simply allow the county participant more fully in the hearing should it choose to do so, whether as a proponent or as an opponent. It also brings some burden that goes along with that, the opportunity or burden to participate in discovery. If one of the parties wants something from us, we would have to produce that information. We could also request that same kind of discovery from one of the other parties. It's very similar to being a participant or a party in a typical lawsuit. So you would have all those same obligations and benefits. In the sense of individually, no, it wouldn't be individual for any individual commissioner, it would be the county through the Board of Comish.
So by becoming party status, we could be asked to come against what we want to do? To testify or to provide information?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I understand your comments, if you don't mind, Eric. If we did it as a county, we're responsible for, I guess, taking that responsibility to the hearings or whatever, that would become, we become involved, but can we do that individually without concerns to the commission itself?
Madam Chair, to the extent you're asking if the county files as a participant and individual commissioners want to represent the county, I would not advise that because I don't think, unless the commission, the Board of Commissioners authorized one of you to, to serve in that role, then you're individually crossing the line. I think that would not be appropriate for you to participate as, as a representative for the county. So could you, as an individual, file as for party status? Certainly, you could do that. But if I understood the first answer, may I address your question?
You did.
Okay.
And I was afraid that's what you'd say.
Okay.
Well, I have to say that I'm not personally convinced that, that there is a lot of benefit to have Minnehaha file for party status. I know that's contrary to what most of you in this room think. Minnehaha County is, we've got a lot of responsibilities put on us by, by statute and we have limited resources. So we have limited staff time, we have limited opportunity to, to participate in the process. I think that, you know, Commissioner Hanson allegedly said that, that he wants to know what the counties think and we're sending a letter telling them what we think. And so I'm not sure that there's a lot to be gained by utilizing limited Minnehaha County resources to further participate in this process. I'm not honestly sure that this is an item for us because it's not on our agenda, but that would be what I think about it.
Madam Chair, so Jean, Commissioner Hanson did, did say that during the hearing at the Ram Cota. And again, I, I just, maybe it's, it's supposed to be an orderless guess, but I smell a rat here. I think they're pumping this up there and they might say we're not going to use it for fracking, but the company they sell it to, you know, perhaps Continental Oil, who donated $250 million to the project, maybe they will do it. They claim it's going to be 50 miles from the oil fields. What's 50 miles if you've already gone 700 miles? I think while corporations would never be untruthful with us, never, I just, this is not right and we should do our best to set, put setbacks of six feet deep and.
That's great, but we, that isn't part of our agenda today. I, I understand that's where you're coming from and I, I get that. And we do want the protection of our, of our people, but that's not part of our discussion today. We're trying to figure out about the latter. And so that's what our discussion is for today.
Well, I've already sent my letter and I'll send another. And if I'm right, I suspect that they'll be getting letters from hundreds, if not thousands of other people, I think.
I think they will.
I've had hundreds of calls and, and emails on this issue. And I don't think we should just brush it aside through some technical thing that it's not on our agenda. We need to take action and if we don't take action, then our replacements will.
It's not on the agenda and so we have nothing prepared to talk about planning and zoning at this point.
Commissioner Haverick. Would you entertain a motion to approve the letter and send it?
That would be my next question.
I, if that's your motion, I would second it with comment.
I have a motion and a second to send this letter to the PUC. Commissioner Kersky.
Commissioner Barth, it's not something that we can actually do. We'd be violating state open meetings laws if we were to add something to our agenda without proper posting and you're fully aware of that. So we cannot just bring this forward without the proper notification and posting. So for that motion, my le, for that reason, my motion is to, or my second is for this letter as written.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth.
It's imperfect, but I plan to vote for it. And I would also say that in my 16 years, I'm not sure I was able to get more than one item on the agenda. So the fact that I want it to be on the agenda, it doesn't matter.
Commissioner Barth, you did not bring it forward earlier, but.
I did not.
But, you know what, we have a motion, a second on the table and we're going to move forward. I have a motion, a second to approve the letter to the PUC.
Just a reminder about what this letter does with the PUC. Just wanted to remind the commission and, and those listening today that the letter, once submitted, actually does put the county on record formally and then will present your comments for the official record with the PUC for their future consideration. So just wanted to remind you what this letter actually does give you as far as record is concerned with the PUC, so.
Understood. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll send it off. So thank you for your time. I know it's took a lot of opportunity, a lot of you own personal time away from work or whatever to come out here and we do appreciate what you're doing and we do share your concerns. We didn't brush it under the carpet. I think the fact that we put three meetings towards this was a big deal. We don't normally put three meetings towards anything. So I appreciate your time and we'll continue to move forward and watch where this is going. So. That will move on to item number 13, which is a public hearing to consider budget carryover and other budget supplements. Susan? You want to wait a second too, Susan, as they kind, some of them I think are going to want to file out. Just a minute more, Susan, thank you. Yep. Carol, it might be important that they recognize they can't stand in front of the voting area outside the hallway. I'm sure they're going to want to communicate, but they can't stand out by the voting. So, thank you. Okay, Susan.
Okay. I'm Susan Bevan with the Auditor's Office. I'm here today to request that you approve a motion for the resolution that you were provided for 2022 budget supplements to the general fund in the amount of $385,132.08 and special revenue funds in the amount of $13,279,784.28. Maybe just a few things. Some of these are routine ones that you, that come forward every year. Some of the, the general fund items were due to supply chain issues, where things that were ordered but then not received, and delays from that, that, from that item, from that issue. The one new item within the general fund is South Dakota Cares. We have had $158.05 remaining in the dollars that we had received in 2021 that was not spent on rental assistance, so that will carry forward into 2022. As far as items within the special revenue funds, the two ones that I will point out to you, and you have all the, the budget requests from the department heads. The rural access fund is a new one. That was that special funding from the state that we had received in 2021 to inventory our small structure inventory process within, within the highway. There was $33,000 that were, that was unspent at the end of the year. That'll carry forward. And then just to point out, Capital Projects Fund is quite a bit higher than last year, but that is related to our two main building projects, the extension building as well as the highway shop remodel.
All right. Questions for Susan? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to these budget carryovers? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor other than Susan? All right, see, no one moved. We will move back to commission action.
Move approval. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget carryovers and other supplements. We need a roll call vote.
Hersky?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hiber?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan. Item number 14 is a briefing to consider a request from Minnehaw County Fire Chiefs Association for funding assistance to purchase the PC-25 compliant radios. Jason?
Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. If you recall, I think it was back in July of last year, the fire department came in front of you and, and kind of had some, some numbers together. And this time, they have, I think, a little more accurate count on what they're looking for, for radios. And it also happens to kind of coincide with our Homeland Security Grant that was just approved, and they were able to get some radios. There were some departments that were able to get some radios for that, which will be available for funding in the fall of this year. So on that, I'll leave it to Mike Harstead, the Fire Chief of Crooks.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm well. So as Jason said, was here back in July or August, I believe, talking about our radio situation. It's interesting, I didn't see on the agenda ahead of time about volunteerism today, but I'm here representing 400 volunteer firefighters in Minnehaw County. Also, we've, we've brought in the ambulance groups as well, the volunteer ambulance groups, because we're all in the same boat here. You know, just, just a little recap. I'm also here, Jason said, I'm the chief at Crooks. I'm also the president of the Minnehaw County Fire Chiefs Association. 2021 was a nutso year for us. Eight of our 11 departments experienced record call volume. It, it, it hasn't gone down, it never will. We know that. The COVID effects on our departments have also been there. We've, we've had more calls, and because of positive tests and so forth, we've had more volunteers out of service over the last two years because of it. So we're responding to more calls, and we're, have less people available to do so. It's, it's taxing. And lastly, the effect, the COVID effect on our fundraising dollars. We haven't been able to have our pancake feeds, and we haven't been able to do our soup dinners and things like that. We're just getting back to those now. We lost two years of that, you know, home-based fundraising. So that's all had an effect. So our request is this. We're mandated by federally to be P-25 compliant with our radio systems beginning at the first of the year 2023. When we started on this state radio system over 15 years ago, the state paid for all of it. They did all the towers, they did everything, and they came and gave us radios. We got radios for our trucks, all the portable communication stuff that we needed. And it's, it was kind of dumped in our lap, and we've been responsible for maintaining it ever since. So, you know, year-over-replacement, maintaining the radios themselves, updated programming, all of that, we've been responsible for. We've known for three years that this upgrade was going to be required. Therefore, we've, we've been busting our tails the last three years, writing grants, beg borrowing, stealing from everywhere we can to get funding. Because if you look at the, the overall cost of the things that we have to have to maintain a fire department, outside of the trucks that we drive, the radios are probably the most expensive portion. They're, they're more expensive than the bunker gear that we use, the air packs that we wear, everything. It's just that, when you look at the totality of the expense, it's there. So when we started this three years, three years ago, we looked at everything that we needed to replace in the county. It was about $1.7 million. In the last three years, through Scott and Jason and a lot of other places, we've been able to get a lot of grant funding and a lot of homegrown funding to, to do replacements. We've compiled and replaced about $1.3 million worth of stuff so far. So what I'm, what we're asking is a little bit of help to get across that finish line, hopefully with perhaps some ARPA funding. But what we're looking at right now, we still need about 136 portable radios. Those are the ones the guys carry on themselves, $412,000 to provide those. And then we also need to upgrade some programming on other equipment that we weren't aware of. When we first started buying radios three years ago, none of us knew anything about encryption. And that's a big buzzword now in the radio market, is they're going to require us to have the radios encrypted. And that means, for at least the time being, that means that every Joe Blow on the street that has a scanner won't be able to hear our emergency communications. We purchased about 90 radios before we found out that we would be forced to encrypt them. It's about $1,500 a radio to go back now and upgrade those. So all totaled, to get us across the finish line, again, 136 radios, 87 upgrades, we're looking at just short of $550,000. So with that, I, I don't exactly know all the procedural requirements to get there, but that's where we stand. I wanted to get back in front of you guys now that, now that the ARPA money is available, and, and just see where we go from here.
Thanks, Mike. I think it will be a budget request because this is just a briefing again.
Right, yep.
So I'm assuming it's a budget request. Commissioner Kers, Bender, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I was going to say, if you could, if you could provide, you know, written documentation of the, the need, and, you know, a breakdown of what it would buy and how, how much it costs for the different items that you talked about, I think that we would certainly look at that. I mean, we certainly want to be good partners with you guys. We know this is a heavy lift, and it is impressive the amount of money that you guys have been able to gather together, you know, over the COVID season. But if you could provide us just actual hard numbers, and, you know, maybe work with the Auditor's Department to make sure you get to them what they need, to make sure that it's eligible for ARPA, then they could bring it forward to us, and we'd be willing to, I'd personally be willing to look at it.
So do you guys have a deadline? Because you mentioned some other grant something or something at the very beginning.
Really, the only hard deadline right now is the fact that, once we hit the end of this year, most of the equipment, I shouldn't say that, the equipment that we haven't updated yet will become unusable. So, and, you know, in the, in the current state of shortages that we run into every day, radios are also a big shortage item. You know, Jason mentioned that we just got some more Homeland Security money approved for radios. The last batch of approvals from Homeland Security was back in October. I ordered eight radios for Crooks back in October, and I still don't have them.
That was my next question. What's your supply chain? Because even if we approved these in July, would you even get them before you needed them? I mean, obviously, you got to have them at some point, but what is your supply chain?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's one of those wonderful things about the only choice that we have for these radios is Motorola. They're the, they're the only ones that work on the system. The, the upgrades will bring some more possibilities into the mix. But Motorola has actually been a really good partner for us. We get a really great price on those radios. There's a state bid out for them that, that's directly to Motorola instead of using local channels. So as far as availability, I, I don't have an answer. Like I said, we've been, we're waiting on six months now for the last order. We've been told they should be here any day, but I know that, I know that answer too well.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benega?
Mike, just for information purposes only, in addition to the equipment, can you provide us some information about the loss of fundraising revenue that you've had in the last couple of years because of not being able to do those activities for COVID-related concerns? But more importantly, between the equipment issues, the COVID fundraising issues, you actually have done more work than I've ever heard you guys being able to accomplish with less volunteers, which is amazing, that that is something that the volunteers have dedicated their time to do. So I'd like to find a way to help.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Harstead, you're a great spokesman for your group, and, you know, haven't we heard from legislators and the state administration that it was under control? And, you know, the bills were pending, and it was all going to be fixed?
And, and they've fixed their side of it. The, the infrastructure in place, state radio out in Pier, that, that kind of stuff, they've taken care of that. But they left the burden of the actual radios in our lap. And I, I'll tell you what, guys. I, I mean, I get to a lot of departments all over this, this state. And, you know, I, I'm here begging on behalf of the Minnehaw County Fire Departments, but I see other places, and you don't have to go very far. I was just with Montrose the other night. And I, you know, they have a, they have a yearly budget of about $15,000. Well, that'll get you two radios. They have four trucks, and they've got about 10 guys calling radios. I, I don't know how they're ever going to comply. When we switch, Minnehaw County, actually Pennington County will switch first. Pennington County is going to switch in like, yeah, in, in the, in spring of '23. That'll be a great test case, and hopefully that will delay our, our, our force into it, but we don't know that yet, so.
Commissioner Kerski?
Morning, Chief.
Morning.
Got to love a great unfunded mandate, right? Just trying to follow...
They're the best.
Yeah, trying to follow the money. So the, the need for Minnehaw County, all the volunteer departments and ambulances, et cetera, is it 2 million? Is that pretty close to?
By, by the time it's all done with, it'll be about 2 million bucks.
And you're about one point, you're about three-fourths of the way there.
We're about three-fourths of the way there.
Okay, okay. I personally have a hard time believing they're going to go dark on January 1st. I mean, what would they do? But I, I do know, I do agree, and, you know, we do need to support you. And I, I'm all for supporting you too, but I just, you know, to add that voice to, why do you do this to us is just beyond comprehension.
Having personally been to several of the hearings in Pier myself, I, I echo that. And they keep telling us that the flip, when the switch is flipped, we better be ready. So I, there has been several pieces of legislation in the last three years trying to go through Pier to find radio funding, and it keeps getting killed every single time.
And you do feel for those small counties because we have the largest population here. Obviously, people opened their pocketbooks and helped with your fundraising. And, but what do you do when you don't hardly have a population in your county, and you got to come up with five or six radios? I don't know where that comes from. Some of these people's income isn't much more than the cost of a radio in a whole year.
Right.
I don't know where that money comes from. So Commissioner Barth, yes?
Madam Chair, so just for the, my edification, back when Jan Klow decreed, decreed that we should all be on the same wavelength, so to speak, didn't he say or imply that we would never get to a point where we had to buy all new radios?
I, I believe he said something like that. The radios that we use now, they're all digital. They're, they're akin to a small laptop that you're carrying around. And I use that, that reference because how long can you carry the same laptop? You know, that radio system has been in place now for, I believe, 17 years. The original radios that came out with that, within probably, I think some of the, the longest-lasting ones got us 10 years. We, we, we had some truck radios that lasted longer than the portables. But it's, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, once we have the base in place, I think our departments have demonstrated over the last 18 years that we're extremely capable of maintaining our equipment and, and keeping a plan together for year-over-replacement and so forth.
I'm sorry to slightly diverge, but are the handheld ones getting better coverage now than they were before? Do we have more? I'm sorry, Scott McMahon left us. He might be able to tell me more, but, because the pattern of coverage in our county, you better not be in a ravine.
It's, it's better. You better not be in a ravine, and you better not be in a metal building, though. Those are issues still, and that's another project that we're working on to get some better coverage. The worst part of our, our coverage area is the northwest sector of the county, once you get up around Colton, Lyons, that area. We're working on some, some tower enhancements and stuff to make that better. Scott has been fantastic. His and, him and his staff have been working very hard the last several months about finding funding to get us some, some better infrastructure in place.
All right. Thank you for the briefing. And like we said, send us the information, and you can send it through Carol, or you can send it through the Auditor's Office. It'll get to the auditor, because that's where it's got to go, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. That will move on to item number 15, which is a 2022 Public Defender's Department briefing. Tracy? Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tracy Smith. I'm with the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. I've been with Minnehaha County for the last 23 years and the department head since 2005. The role of the Public Defender's Office is to safeguard the rights of all people by protecting the individual rights of those who are entrusted to our care. And we provide zealous advocacy and representation to all who are appointed by the court based on those who fill out an application for court-appointed counsel and judges who determine that they are indigent, meaning their income falls below the poverty line. And essentially, we provide representation in the county through either our office or the Public Advocate's Office. And in 2021, we opened 7,784 cases and closed 7,693 cases. And locally, we provided 90% of the representation of individuals in the criminal justice system. And those who we were not able to provide representation, either through our office or the Public Advocate's Office, went to local private attorneys who agreed to be on the court-appointed... who agreed to be on the court-appointed list. For those who we were able to provide court-appointed representation, the average cost per case was $479 per case. And those that we weren't able to provide representation for, the average cost per case was $1,308. So, it makes sense for the county to have a public defender, public advocate's office. And out of the 66 counties in South Dakota, there are only three counties in the state of South Dakota that have chosen to have public defender offices. The early stages of representation, our office essentially is trying to provide, the critical care that we provide is identifying their social needs. We advocate for medical healthcare. We gather mitigating, mitigating informations in hopes of providing representation to see what we can do about, hoping to reduce incarceration. We have two main partnerships that we use to do that, either through our partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare or by our in-custody review team that we participate in. And through those groups, we provide a continuum of care for our clients that live in the community. We also participate in several problem-solving courts. Minnehaha County has four problem-solving courts. We have the Mental Health Court, Drug Court, DWI Court, and Veterans Court. Those are programs that we are very proud to be a part of in Minnehaha County and they have proven to be successful alternatives to prison. They lower costs, reduce crime, reduce recidivism. And it has been proven nationally that drug courts are six times more likely to keep participants in treatment after they complete their program. And for every dollar invested in drug courts, taxpayers save three times as much in criminal justice costs. The great part of being a part of the drug court team is they are non-adversarial. A lot of times you hear about our, you know, attorneys talk about trials. The great part of being a part of the Mental Health Court team, is which I participate in, is, it is an opportunity to work with our clients, be a part of a team, and to hopefully keep our clients out of jail, reduce recidivism. And as part of that, we attend weekly staffing with law enforcement, with members of the community, caseworkers. And we try to stay current on new policy, attend staff meetings, and then help our clients to stay on medications and try to keep them out of the system long-term. In 2021, our attorneys, in addition to staying, working with our cases, we spent 1,040 hours serving in our capacities on the problem-solving courts. Like all the other departments, 2021 was headlined by the ongoing pandemic. And like the rest of the community, we experienced its impact. We did see a deep, big decrease in violent crime. I know Dan Hager was here a couple of weeks ago and spoke about the decrease they experienced in violent crime and we also felt the same. We saw a reduction in burglaries, assaults on law enforcement, and homicide cases. Unfortunately, we did see the financial impact on our most vulnerable in the community. Disorderly conduct, we saw 252% increase. Unlawful occupancies, we saw 11% increase. And in no insurance cases, we saw a 27% increase. Our total felonies were 2,785. Misdemeanors were 3,769 cases. And unfortunately, for juveniles, we experienced 262 cases. Abuse and neglect, we had 151% cases, or excuse me, 151 cases. So, for juveniles, it was a 6% increase in cases. And for our abuse and neglect cases, that was a 5% increase in cases. A majority of our clients, we experienced challenges with mental health, substance use, or both. The challenges, how we addressed those were just by reaching out through our community health environments. We continued to work with our problem-solving courts. We participated in the Juvenile Justice Collaborative, where we discussed finding solutions through talking with our committees, looking at opportunities to address diversion programs. I know that Daniel was here speaking about what they've been doing with that program. We also spoke about addressing issues related to racial disparities in the community and also have been working with, trying to address some of the backlog in cases related to the pandemic, pandemic with staffing shortages and those sort of things. Our office also continues to work with the USD School of Law Criminal Justice Practicum, which is a program where we have certified legal interns who work in our office throughout the fall semester. And it's an opportunity for these third-year law students to acquire skills so that they can attain the necessary knowledge to become future lawyers. And it gives them an opportunity to practice law while being under the supervision of a lawyer in our office. The benefit of having these lawyers work in our office is, A, our attorneys look forward to having them in our office every year. It gives them an opportunity to help with briefs, watching videos. And as the popularity has grown, it's also been a great recruitment tool. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about turnover. In 2021, we experienced a 3% turnover. And over the last five years, it's been a 13% turnover rate. And that is one of the benefits that we have had with having this practicum in our office is we do have a lot of attorneys who, because we've had this practicum, have wanted to come to our office. One of the greatest strengths that we've had is, community has always been our ability to celebrate diversity, our desire to maintain strong neighborhoods. The biggest goal in our office has been always to ensure that all the citizens in our community have equal access to resources, to ensure that jail is not becoming the only option when we run out of all other options. And to make sure that we recognize that for every day that a client sits in jail, they are one day closer to losing everything they have. And to make sure that everyone understands that the trauma of being locked in jail does significant harm. We've really worked hard over the last few years to be more collaborative in our approach to ensuring that the clients attain the resources that they need when it comes to mental health and housing and attaining the substance abuse services that we need. And as we look towards 2023, our goals are to continue working with the community, the state's Attorney's Office, the commission, and reaching out and looking for resources as a group and attaining the services that we need for our clients. We are working with the courts in looking at the backlog of cases. And we just recently started meeting, I know Justice Hauman, as, as looking at ways that we can all work together in addressing case processing and collaborating to discuss barriers with reducing delays in some of the pending cases that we have seen grown over the last 18 months. We are also looking at the role that we have had in problem-solving courts and seeing what we can do to improve and define our role. And then we are also wanting to finalize the contracts that we have been discussing with UJS and the county. And then finally, the annex remodel, we've been working on that. I know Mark Facilities has done so much work on the first and the third floor to get that finalized to ensure that we have a safe and productive work environment for our staff. So, we really are appreciative of everything that everybody has been doing, our staff and the, the community and the commission. And we're just looking forward to continuing those efforts, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Tracy. Any questions for Tracy?
Just have one comment. Yesterday, I was on a call with the state oversight on the mental health bill that we had. And it came up in that conversation that KSFY last week, I believe, or a week and a half ago, had a very good story on the mental health courts. And it was the graduation of our first person, I believe, that had went through mental health courts. You could probably dig back and find, I think it was on March 31st, if I remember correctly. It was a very good story. It's about two minutes long and it just talks about what our mental health court does and the importance of it and how this woman was restored back to her family and everything. So, good stuff happens in those mental health, in, in all of those specialty courts. So, thanks, Tracy, for what you do. Appreciate it. And we just had a conversation this morning about your build-out with Mark, so.
Thank you. Yes, Chief Tomb was our keynote speaker and, yes, Lindsay did a great job.
She did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is a 2022 Highway Department briefing. Good morning, Steve.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Gurren, Highway Superintendent. Just past nine months working for Minnehaha County and time flies. The Highway Department's mission is to provide a safe, efficient, and reliable highway system. We're responsible for the design, construction, and maintenance of about 200 bridges and 347 miles of roadways. And we are staffed with a very dedicated and capable staff of 30 full-timers and one variable staff person in our parts room. Biggest issue we're facing right now, like everybody else, is costs. Rising fuel costs, construction costs. And they can just continue to rise rapidly. This resulted in rejection of bids for our Highway 149 project into Colton. The project's currently being redesigned to limit the amount of overall grading in an effort to reduce costs. We're also looking at doing some kind of pavement preservation project, hoping to reduce costs and doing a full excavation, grade replacements. Still working on that. Part of our budget processing this year, you will see our five-year CIP plan. You'll see all the projects increase somewhere in the 20% to 30% range to reflect the increased cost of fuel and commodities. Speaking of commodities, fuel costs, there will also be a major impact for us. We drive for everything we do. All of our equipment runs on gasoline and diesel. Our commodity prices, they all have increased, including weed chemicals, which have nearly doubled in price, if you can even get it. Fortunately, we've had a mild winter so far this season. This has resulted in a degree, decrease in our snow and ice removal activities, which has saved us, between overtime, commodities, and fuel, a significant amount. But we all know what could happen yet this month and in October, so. Most of our projects for 2022 have been let. Our projects under construction include micro-surfacing, chip seal, crack seal, culvert replacements, and one bridge rehabilitation. We have two remaining projects to be bid. That's the intersection improvements at Crooks Corner, Highway 130 and 137, and replacing Structure 50, 101, 080 on Highway 118 near Tri Valley Schools. Our safety improvement projects for this year include improving the intersection of Highway 115 and 150 by removing the small curve and creating a perpendicular intersection. The state was planning on doing upgrades to that intersection. We came to the commission last year to approve that project and they pushed it back possibly to 2026. After another accident over the winter, our staff went out there and determined we could do that in-house. So, we're going to go out there using county forces and, and do this work already. We're going to get a flashing LED stop sign out there. And we're also working with our partners in Iowa to facilitate that project. Three structures will be receiving guardrail and grading, grading improvements at our bridges. In addition, our safety projects include our no-passing zones that are going to be adjusted as a result of our chip seal, micro-surfacing, and the South Dakota DOT recess striping project. We're also going to have two railroad crossings receive crossing upgrades consisting of cantilever arms and lights. One in-house program we're taking back is our in-house rural mowing program. Actually, we have a John Deere tractor, I believe, is being shipped down here this week. We're going to be coming to the commission in two weeks to purchase it. It's a used tractor we got a lead on that came from my previous employer. So, we're pretty confident in the condition of that piece of equipment. The mowing program will be coordinated with our weed spraying programs. So, they're working in conjunction and so sometimes those weren't always working out with a contractor doing the mowing. This is going to be managed by our weed and pest coordinator, Jason McCubbin. Our rural infrastructure, small structures program, SDH Consultants, completed the culvert inventory for the townships and maps were made available to all the townships. Funding was passed by legislature this year for culvert replacements this year and beyond. We're still waiting for guidance for the state on how the program will be administered. We've heard that there's a pamphlet coming out towards the end of April. We'll have more guidance on funding and different administration programs. We currently have 14 bridges under design. Between grant funding and regular programming, our bridge replacement program is going full speed ahead. These projects range from TSNL design projects to full rehabilitation to bridge replacement. Our future construction programs will largely be depending on our funding. If we're able to secure federal infrastructure funding, we will be accelerating our bridge replacement program and also increasing our pavement preservation projects. We have been working with one consulting firm on federal funding and they're looking in the rural program possibly for two of our bridges. And they also have recommended, as of yesterday, that we start working on direct earmarks with our congressional representatives. So, we plan on reaching out to the, our two senators and our one representative probably later yet this week to start working on possibly earmark funding for those projects. Just like the mild winter had a good effect on our snow and ice control operations, it had a very excellent effect on our new highway facility that's under construction. Mark filled you in on the status of that. Actually, the picture he showed of the office, when I left Highway this morning, there were people actually walking on the roof over our office area. So, that's a great sign that we're getting the building enclosed. Our plan still is to move in in October, could be September. And as last we heard, we're still within budget. One thing I'd like to add for next week, and now that I know, after watching the proclamations earlier this meeting, next year I'll come with a proclamation. But next week, the week of April 11th, marks the National Work Zone Safety Awareness Week, an annual spring campaign held at the start of the construction season to encourage safe driving through work zones. The entire staff of the Highway Department would like to ask everyone to please slow down in passing through work zones.
I think you have till Friday. Oh, you'll miss it because we don't have a commission meeting next week, never mind.
Next year.
Next year.
But thank you again for giving me the chance to lead the Highway Department. It's a, I've been very impressed with our very capable and dedicated staff and everybody enjoys serving the residents of Minnehaha County.
Commissioner Kurski?
I think I can say for one, and I probably speak for the group. We've been very impressed with you, Steve. Thank you for what you've done, your leadership and the direction you've taken the department.
Thank you.
Minnehaha County is a great place to work as someone who's going to be retiring. But it is a great place to work and we continue to hire top-notch people to work in here. So, it is really a great place. I was going to ask about curves, just a second. We're taking a curve out that's in the southeast area of Minnehaha County. Do we just have one curve left in the, in our county now, or is there?
We have several curves, especially on the northern border, going into Moody and Lake County.
Okay.
And actually, I've had Jacob Mars working with the South Dakota DOT on federal HZF funding. It's a safety improvement program that the federal government funds safety improvements. And we've had some encouraging conversations with Federal Highway that we might be able to get some federal funding to go after more of these curves and other safety improvement projects using federal funds.
Yeah, I just had a comment or a phone call last week about the curve that's north of Crooks. But in my recollection, there has only been one accident there in probably the last 20 years. But still, it's an accident, so. Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Steve, for coming. I guess we have a few more. I guess we have a few more items for you down the list. We're going to item number 17. Consider a resolution authorizing electronic bidding or electronic proposals in connection with procurement contracts in Minnehaha County.
Not too long after I started, I had a conversation with County Auditor Ben Kite. And one of the things that Ben and I both were interested in doing is looking at electronic bid software for both our highway projects and other procurement contracts that the county enters into. We looked at a couple of different processes. One is one that Hennepin County uses, where I worked before, but there is quite a significant cost in using that Bentley product. I talked with several public works directors, both in Minnesota and South Dakota, and one name that kept coming up was Quest CDN out of the Twin Cities. We also, I sent an email out to all the Highway Superintendents, and there was only one other county doing electronic bidding, and of all places, it's Bonham County. Their consulting firm uses Quest CDN.
Okay.
We had a meeting in January with the AGC, and Jacob polled the contractors and all the different contractors that were there. Quest CDN was the choice of the contractors if we were going to proceed. Dakota County, Minnesota, switched to Quest CDN last year. They were gracious enough to talk with us about the pros and cons, and they've been very impressed. So after looking at different systems, the Auditor's Office and Highway Department would like to proceed with Quest CDN for electronic bidding software, and we're looking for your support to allow that.
Questions for Highway? I think one that came up yesterday was, this is something we can use. When I was talking with Carol, and I talked to Jean, and Jean kind of brought it up, is that this can be used more than just the Highway Department. Other departments could use it, too. So, it's a great asset for Minnehaha County in a lot of different ways. So, additional comments?
Madam Chair. I see the use of this as win-win for the county and for people submitting bids, and I would make a motion to authorize the use of it.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. I need a roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and UTEC Engineering Incorporated for Design Project MC 22-08, Structure 50-330-8, no, excuse me, 50-330-086, Bridge Replacement.
Once again, Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. Yes, this is a structure on Highway 103, just north of Garrettson. We put out an RFP for proposals. The best proposal received was from Ultech Engineering. This structure is a 52-foot single-span precast concrete double-T bridge with concrete abutments and a 31-and-a-half-foot roadway width. It was built in 1977 and has a sufficiency rating of 68. We are looking for your approval to contract with Ultech Engineering to perform initial and final design. We anticipate having this bridge ready for bids, and you will see it in our 2023 budget request later this year.
Questions, comments?
Motion to award the project to Ultech for MC 22-08.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve. Item number 19 is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the Minnehaha County AFSC, ME AFSCME, Highway Union Contract.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Yes, in front of you today is a union contract with Highway Union, which is through AFSCME. And this is a contract that we're signing early this year because we're doing some adjustments. Typically, it would go into play January 1 of 2023. The contract actually would start April 2, which was last Saturday, and it was the start of a new pay period for us, which is why that date was chosen, and would go through the end of 2025. So, we were excited about this. Personally, I will tell you, the best part about union negotiations is getting to work with staff, because I don't always get to do that all that often. Cody is president of the Highway Union, so I guess I would invite you. If you have any questions, you can certainly invite him up. I would stress three major points that we have. One is a matrix adjustment of 7% effective April 2, 2022. And we're also doing the elimination of steps two and four, and a matrix adjustments of 5% for 2023, 5% for 2024, and 3% for 2025. For the Highway Department, there also is the addition of laundry service or onsite laundry for mechanic team members. I've come to appreciate in this process how incredibly tough it is on their clothes, and then you drive home in a vehicle, your own personal vehicle, and it's in your laundry and machine and all those types of things. So this will be good to go through and do. Superintendent Groh has been very aggressive, not the quite word, but wanting to move, insistent is a good word, for moving this particular part forward. We are also putting in place the requirement of ANSI-rated safety work boots and reimbursement of work-related clothings or safety boots upon submission of an itemized receipt. The difference with that is we used to just put it out in one check. This will be per itemization. And then the other thing is the effect of January 2023. The health insurance premium split will move from 7030 to 7525. We appreciate the support of the commission in moving forward with this. It is really nice knowing we're going into budget process with personnel issues done. It makes our meetings and our process and all the work that the auditor and his staff has right now, it makes it flow much easier. So, for your consideration, would bring this forward. And again, Cody happens to be here if you've got any questions for him.
Cody, do you have any comments you want to make? He's a representative from the Highway Department here. Thanks for coming to our meeting today.
Thank you. Cody Parker, Highway Department, Union President. Big thing is, just want to thank everybody for recognizing kind of cost-of-living adjustments that need to be made and mechanics. We definitely appreciate that. So, thank you, guys. Carol, Carrie, Steve, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Cody. Any questions for Cody?
Thank you.
Or a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 20 is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement on construction for a youth livestock building at the fairgrounds. Carol Mueller.
Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to authorize an agreement with the Sioux Empire Fair Association for construction of a youth livestock building. This conversation started in 2019 when the Fair Board came to you and said, "We really need to do something different out there." And along the way, COVID happened, price escalations, all those other kinds of things have occurred. So, the plan at this point, that they have raised almost, I think, almost 100%?
It's all raised now.
All raised now, 100% is raised for this facility, which will be put at about $227,000. It will be a 100-by-100 structure. Trish, if you could just scroll down one, you can see where the building will be located at. There's a, oh, it's pink, but it's not real pink on all the screens. To the left-hand side is the location where it will be, and if you scroll down just a little bit farther, is what the building will be. So, it is not fully enclosed, but it is a place that will be much better than what we've had in the past for showing things. So, we do an agreement. Anytime we do these processes with doing this, the Pipestone Building, the Johnson-Norstrom Building, all have history as to how we have done these in the past. So, they will be building it. They'll be having work with Mark Krins, so we're familiar with the construction and the plans going into it. And once it's done, it gets turned over to us for us to have it, and we ensure it and are responsible for it. So, as part of our management agreements as to how we split things. So, Scott Wick is here from the Fair Association, if you have any questions for him. But would it open it up for your consideration and discussion?
Any questions for Carol or Scott? Scott was here early this morning, and now he's back, so.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to have you sign this agreement.
Is there a second?
Second, Benega.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Scott, for coming back. Next, we have commission liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports for this week? Commissioner Burghardt.
Madam Chair, we did have one item appealed on the Planning Commission from a week ago yesterday, and it was an item that was actually on the consent agenda, but with the overflow that we had going on in the hallway, it was much a bigger group than we had today. And the person in the hallway wasn't understanding the consent agenda and didn't, you know, yell about it. And so later on was disappointed they didn't hold it out. So, we have a CAFO that's coming out at us. It's, it looked like an okay one to me. But anyway, then we also, I had a meeting with the E-Board of CCOG, and I'm the only one that voted against raising our dues.
Good for you. Thinking out for the budget, huh? Any other liaison reports?
I've got a couple, but one is, I'm part of the JDAI group, and Senate Bill 73 had a lot of controversy in the legislative session, and fortunately, that got tabled. And now the group is going to, literally in about an hour, have a conference call about establishing a summer study process, which is going to be something that we can work with, with the partners and specifically the school superintendents to make work. And that's going to be a positive communication approach. Also worked with, actually, Steve Groh on agreement that the counties had with Game Fish and Parks and the township on Highway 11 to replace some of the road that's going to pot, literally. So, at the last minute, the governor did approve that, and fortunately, that went through with Steve's help and frankly, some very hard work from the township, so.
Any others? Commissioner Kerski.
Just received a thank you from some of the individuals at NACO for my participation yesterday in an hour-long webinar called "Somewhere to Go," and it was specifically about, and for communities that are looking at community triage centers. So I was one of the presenters in a breakout, all done online, but interesting process and enjoyed it, enjoyed the experience, but a little bit more national, I guess, recognition of our county and our community on what we're doing involving community triage.
And I would tell you all that I contacted them after the presentation, and it will be available on their website supposedly today, if you want to go in and catch Commissioner Kerski in action on his webinar.
Action.
So, thank you so much for participating in that webinar. I appreciate that. So, any other liaison reports? All right. Is there any non-action commission discussion? Seeing now, we will do a motion to recess for executive session.
That's my motion.
A motion and a second. We'll meet in about 10 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.